Welcome, everybody, to the, what is it? This is the February 9th Administrative Committee Meeting. To my right is Wayne Kraus, to my left is John Weber, and Acting City Supervisor is Bill Belknap, and I'm Dan Carscallen. First order of business is the approval of the January 26th minutes. And John and I were there. What do you think, John?
I think we ought to approve them.
Okay, we'll consider them approved. Next up was the Paradise Path Task Force Request for Commission Status. And Tom Grendon and Margaret Littlejohn are going to present that to us.
Would you click her, Bill? Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. Tom Grendon's staff liaison to the Paradise Path Task Force, and I'm proud to introduce Margaret Littlejohn, our august chairperson of the Paradise Path Task Force. Margaret, take it away.
Well, we're here, as you know, to request that the task force now become a commission because we feel we have a long-term direction that needs to be fulfilled to meet city requirements and preferences, I guess. So, we're proposing that we become Moscow Pathways Commission with seven members that would serve three-year terms. And, let's see, am I going the wrong way up? Okay. Okay. So, we were asked during August of 2013 to present quarterly reports to you about the attendance at our meetings, as well as what projects we were working on. And so, all those meetings have had a quorum through the end of last year. And just to highlight again, some of the, each quarter's accomplishments, I think most of you have been there for the presentations I've done for the full City Council, but just to highlight a couple of them. We worked on several sections of orphan paths, which are in the process of getting signs posted to identify them as public right-of-ways that people can use. We participated in Walk to School and the Eye Count in 2013. We prepared an exhibit board for the Commission Fair. And we encouraged striping that you see in the little photo there of the Paradise Path for better use in dark situations. Second quarter, we got new solar batteries installed in all 34 bollards along Paradise Path, which was needed because a number of them had burnt out and they weren't as efficient as we had hoped. We also prepared the exhibit for the Commission Fair. We elected new officers, collaborated with U of I students to develop past signage to improve its usability, and we approved goals for 2014 and 15. And in April, in the third quarter, we passed, we wrote a new mission statement, which you see there, and we presented it to Parks and Rec and then to you, and then to City Council, and they approved it on April 7th. Approved our mission statement. And we joined the Idaho Walk Bike Alliance to promote active transportation. And several members attended the Latah Trail Foundation, since they're kind of leading the way with trails around Moscow, but we're trying to lead the way with trails in Moscow. And in the fourth quarter, we staffed the farmer's market booth for three Saturdays, June 14th, July 26th, and September 20th. We added one new member to our group, and we staffed an exhibit at Palesa Fest. And we submitted two questions to the City of Moscow Citizen Survey for the coming year. So, we still have a lot of goals that are unfinished, and that's one of the reasons that we want to encourage you to vote for us as a commission. We have the underpass at Steiner and White and Highway 8, the Troy Highway, which you see in the photo to the left there, which I understand is moving forward through City Council, so we're very happy to hear that. We got, we participated in soliciting funds with Tracy Mays, University of Idaho class, to raise money for the Blackbird Station across from East City Marketplace, where there's a rest area proposed for the trail that would include benches and water and some landscaping. And so, we have a sign there right now to increase public awareness and let them know that we are trying to raise money for the city to accomplish this project. We're working on improving the butterfly garden at Berman Creekside Park because it's kind of gone to the more dominant plants, and we want to get it more in balance again. And we're proposing some workdays for the public and our members to accomplish some various tasks on the pathway. We are also developing wayfinding signs that would be signs with a map of Moscow and a "You are here" to go in several places along the pathway to help people navigate through town. And we're hoping, of course, to add some more sections of pathway so that it's more connected for people to access. We're trying to improve the connection, which you see in the lower-right photo, at Highway 95 and Highway 8 intersection, because right now, the walkers and bikers have to just walk through mud, basically, to get from the sidewalk to the pathway. And we have some ground-up paving that we can put there. It's just a matter of finding the time to do it when it's not too wet. And we want to continue adding orphan paths, continue collaborating with Safe Routes to School and Transportation Commission on common goals. Let's see, this I have to, okay. So, this is one of our long-term goals, is to have a circular route around Moscow so that bikers and walkers have a faster and off-road way to get around the city. And we're working with the University of Idaho Civic Engineering classes to make this happen. We actually got their recommendations on the best routes, and obviously, those can change, but we're working with them to try to accomplish this over the long term. And we want to make sure that the pathway is included whenever long-term planning is done for the city, so that we have the pathway as an integral part of the planning effort. So, why should we become a commission? We feel that our work is not finished, far from it. We also feel that the Transportation Commission, although they do look at pathways sometimes, is not focused on pathways, whereas we are, and that it's very important that somebody pay attention to all the pathways through town to try to establish good routes that can be used by everybody and connect the city throughout the city, because right now we have very limited connectivity. We want to continue to make the public more aware of city pathways. There's still a lot of misunderstanding about Latah Trail and Paradise Path and also Chipman Trail. And we want to have some workdays and maybe some fundraising days as we move along through the process to encourage that participation and awareness. And as the city grows, we want to make sure, as I just mentioned, that pathways are an integral part of city planning, collaborating with other commissions, of course. And in the future, we want to establish that circular walking/biking route around the city with green spaces along it. And I think that's actually a selling point for our city, because pathways are, an exercise, an active recreation, are all high on everybody's priority lists when they're looking for a place to live. Are there any questions?
Wayne?
Are there any questions, Margaret? About a year and a half ago, we had a pretty major discussion about the worth of the Paradise Path Task Force. At that particular time, you folks were kind of in limbo. In fact, you were not even able to have a quorum most of the time for your meetings. And we challenged you to prove why you're needed. And I, for one, think that you have proven that. I think you've been very active, and I think you have made a good case for becoming a commission, and so I will support that myself.
Well, thank you, Wayne.
No real comment.
Yeah, I agree that, you know, the big thing that, to me, was if we were going to make you a commission, we had to come up with a name, and I think you got a good one there. You know, it's, it is kind of, fills that little, that little space between Parks and Rec and Transportation, you know, it's kind of the little fill-in there. So, I think that, I think that we'll go ahead and, you know, forward this for approval. Since it is an ordinance, we'll put it on the regular agenda, so we'll see you, not Monday, but Tuesday.
Just one housekeeping comment.
Go ahead.
Dan, in the draft ordinance as presented to you, it says the City Parks and Facilities Manager will be named as the Staff Liaison. Legal Department has suggested that be the Parks and Recreation Director at his discretion.
Or his design.
Or his design. So, that'll be changed for the next go-round. Thank you.
Works for me.
Awesome.
All right. Thanks for coming. Well, it's not done yet, Margaret. Got one more, one more hurdle. All right, next on the agenda is Moscow Farmer's Market Policy Revisions, and Kathleen Burns and Erin Carroll are going to present that to us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Two meetings in a row. What a treat for me.
You'd think.
That's what I tell myself. Helps get me here. Well, I didn't make a formal presentation, since there's nothing that has changed since the last time I was here, other than Kathleen has helped facilitate, get our recommendations into past legal and into draft form, as it would be reflected in our current policy manual and what we're proposing to change. So, I can be happy to walk through all of those recommendations again today, if you'd like me to, or answer any questions that maybe have come up in the past week since we've talked about them.
Well, I guess what are the big, you know, let's just, you know, bullet kind of the big changes from, we talked a little bit about, I know you had in there, produce truck. Well, that's, doesn't take in everything, so that kind of stuff.
Sure. There's not too many, so I think we can walk through them pretty easily. In your packet, there is the revised draft of the policies, and there's no page within the packet that I have, I'm sorry. It's page one of nine of the policy manual, but. So, the first change that you'll see in there was the addition of our core values that we'd like to add to the mission statement. This is meant to help our customers and our vendors and city staff member and our community members to understand what really drives the market, and especially what drives the decisions that shape the market. Our mission statement, we thought about changing that, but found that, right now, that that's probably fine, but felt adding core values might help guide our decision-making policies and help our farmer's market and our City Council ultimately in, in kind of deciding what is right for future changes to our policies, or even changes to the structure of our market. So, you'll see the highlights there of access, access, economic opportunity, community, and information. We feel those really reflect what we currently have in the market and where the market will grow. If there's no immediate comments on those, I can go to the next change. It looks like there is just an update to some of the side spaces that the market uses, just clarifying what we currently do, it looks like, and updating the map to our usage. And removing, under "B," the space in the market, we had allocations by percentages based on produce vendors, based on craft vendors, et cetera, et cetera. Originally, those were required to be in our policies to have EBT in the market.
Okay.
But we currently aren't following those percentages, and they're no longer required. And so, if they're not really serving us as a policy, we don't see any reason to keep them in.
Right.
We get to skip a few pages. The next one that we have on here is a line about the mandatory market orientation that our vendors are required to attend. The Farmer's Market Commission actually just recommended that the mandatory meeting be organized in a way that respects everybody's time. So, if there's any new vendor information, that that be put at the end of the meeting, so our seasoned vendors don't have to sit through all that information that they already know, and we can be respectful of that. The next one, under "E" there on that same page, is regarding when the street will be closed, clearing vehicles from our Main Street space, and this was brought to the commission from Barry himself, and something that would make his job much easier and make our streets much safer, and the ability to open our market at a, at a reasonable time with having the path cleared. The next one that you'll see in here is adding a juring process for our value-added food market vendors, and as well as our craft vendor, well, our craft vendors are currently adjured, and we wanted to have that same kind of quality control over our other vendors. And then you'll also see the addition of children vendors should request market space prior to the market day. One of the great things that we saw this year was increased child vendor participation, but it made it hard to find space for all of them, and it is heartbreaking to turn a child down when they want to come sell things. So, we wanted to try and make it easier on Barry to reserve enough space for those that want to attend. John, did you have a comment?
Well, you've got, children vendors should request market space prior to market day. Are you comfortable with that, or maybe child vendors shall request instead of should?
That was my same question. It went to legal and changed. I think it was allowing the manager to have some flexibility on day-of and kind of having a transitional period where we can inform child vendors of how that process works. And so, if we had something of shall or must, that means to enforce our policy, we would have to turn them away, and there's not an easy way to necessarily educate a lot of our child vendors right now. So, we want to make it so we have the flexibility to allow them to attend.
That makes sense. The only other thing I see is takedown. I've seen people there well past 2:00 PM, and it's usually the same person. You know, I don't know if there's any kind of, is there any impact on that person for not taking down in time? Do they get any sort of...
What's the penalty?
What is, what is the, what is the penalty for it?
Well, we, we have given that vendor, or a series of vendors, not just one.
Right.
We might need to look at that timeframe, is one to two not enough time? Most vendors are learning that an hour is sufficient time, and they're figuring it out, but we do have a kind of a penalty violation, and we do write that person up and encourage them to get off the street.
And what does the, what does the write-up consist of? I mean, is there any financial or...
Well, you know, there's a verbal reprimand, then there's a written reprimand. If there's a second reprimand, then there is a, the final of you won't participate in the market. So, we do have that process in place.
I mean, I don't want to boot anybody out that probably, you know, is...
Right.
Evidently, they're selling stuff, because, you know, and people do like that vendor, but I think that, you know, they need to take the responsibility to get, you know, get cleared out when everybody else does.
So, we'll work on that a little heavier.
You know, I've never had mentioned this before, but whenever I go to the market, I always go in the morning. Never been there later on in the afternoon, so I don't know the answer to this. By 1:00, is the farmer's market really winding down? Was there really a need to stretch this thing another hour? What's, what's the demand?
That's a good question.
I mean, this is a reason why they're not clearing out by 2:00, because they're still selling product.
Correct. There's still people eating at picnic tables, there's still product being sold.
Should this be turned into an all-day event?
Or, or is that...
Scratch that from the record.
The man is a no.
No. I think...
Extended from 1:00?
Well, we, we used to go till noon, and then we extended it to 1:00. That took the public a little bit of time to come around. It did add new customers from 12 to 1 that, unlike yourself, came later in the day. So, you know, we can look at that, but I don't think we're ready to do that.
And I think it'd be interesting to look at that or do it as a trial. I think we could talk about that. One thing is that brings up other problems. So, there are a few people selling, but there's also a number of people that sell out, and so then, is it beneficial to have a market that goes from 1:00 to 2:00 that's kind of a...
Only half the vendors have product.
Right, a watered-down market. So, if I only came during that time, would that be beneficial? But it could be something we can look at.
Man wanted to come up.
Always.
Don't be shy.
I'm not. So, just coming from the perspective of someone who does shut down the market and is there, and just coming from the perspective of it only being on Main Street, you have a lot of students coming in, and while they may not necessarily be buying a lot of produce and a lot of bulk produce, they're coming in to get the prepared food. And you also have a lot of shoppers, like foreign exchange students and their families, that want to come in and get the deal and haggle. And so, that, you know, for a vendor who's trying to conduct a business yet still fall in line with policy, what do you do with that customer? And the vendor we're speaking of, she is very popular with a lot of people, and, you know, there have been times when, thankfully, we've taken on a, like a fraternity who's come to volunteer at the market, and I've just sent them down to her. And I've just said, just help her out, just get her, so building that volunteer capacity could also help. And then, there have been days where, you know, people aren't used to, like customers coming up at like 1:00, 1:30, and still wanting to buy things, and they just don't have the time to go and get their truck and start tearing stuff down. Liz's neighbor, Omachi, you know, they have a whole family that's there with them and little kids running around. So, I, I'm not, I don't know if you need to extend the hours, but there, I could see that suiting a lot of people.
But then...
But then...
They're going to be there until 3:00.
Right. Yeah, no, and I, I mean, there's a lot of things to consider, but just taking into consideration what I'm seeing happening on the ground. And I usually am parking the gator and getting everything in and like going home by 2:30.
You know, that's not awful.
Yeah.
But I've seen, I think I've seen her down there.
And she, yeah, yeah. You know, she, and she is a vendor that, you know, she's by herself a lot of the time. She does try and get some people to volunteer with her and come down with her, and she does have a sizable operation. So, it is something that maybe she might want to start scaling back, you know, she's getting older. But there are some other vendors there, and, and what do you do with the customers, I think, is another...
Yeah, I'm not saying she's the only one, but just the one I noticed, so.
I think it'll be important for us to work with Amanda and Barry, who are trying to assist people in getting off, getting out of the streets. I think one thing the commission has tried to work on is making policies that we can actually enforce, which is why we have all of these tiny changes and details, because we want this document to be useful.
And maybe that's something, I know you survey the market customers, you know, every year, and I would imagine you get a, do you do a vendor survey by the end of the year?
Yep.
Maybe that's something to ask them, would, do you want to go another hour or two or whatever?
Okay.
But, but again, you know, does, do we want Amanda and Barry to have to hang out there for another hour or two as well? So, you know, that's...
And it may be something that we'd only want to do in peak months.
Right.
In May, when it's just starting to build, or in October, when the weather is making it, or the produce is less, we might only consider doing that for certain months rather than the whole season.
The big time.
Right.
I could see the, the need, if we have, if we have produce vendors, for instance, that still have product, and they're still trying to sell, and they still have customers coming. I could see an argument there for extending the period of time that the market is open. As far as people that are coming in just to buy food to eat, you know, and to eat lunch or something, there's plenty of restaurants that they can go to to eat if they want to eat. So, I wouldn't be as encouraged to extend the hours for the eating purposes as, as I would be for the actual vendors.
Other than that, I don't think there's, there's any problems with revisions. I think you're, you're starting to, you know, tighten up the holes and things like that. This is a resolution, Bill, but can we go ahead and put this on consent, or should we, should this be a regular?
As a resolution, it can be on consent.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with putting it on consent, and we'll just go ahead and go forward with it.
Great.
That way, it gives you guys, lets you guys get, I mean, yeah, we're going to be official next week, but gives you that much closer to getting it, getting it out to everybody so they know what they're expecting.
Has anyone checked with the brick-and-mortar people on Main Street as to when they would like to see the farmer's market end on a Saturday?
No.
That might be another survey.
We might want to do that.
I think Gina would be able to give us a pretty good pulse on that as well.
Yeah, she could probably figure that out. Yeah, she is the vice chair, so she'll be able to figure it out.
I think so.
Put it on record that we tasked her with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, that's, that's all of our regular agenda, so it's report time. First up is, Tom Grendon's going to give us a report on the Adopt a Tree Program that the Tree Commission's been getting going.
Thank you, Dan. Approximately one year ago, the City Council, at the request of the Tree Commission, approved the Adopt a Tree Program citywide for the City of Moscow. And over the course of the past year, Nils Petersen, a member of the Tree Commission, and myself have been working to develop the program. We started very slowly over the course of the past year, and the idea was to extend services to our urban forests through the extension of staff time via volunteers. So, we did recruit a number of volunteers, eight to be exact, who worked at five different locations and helped us water trees and shrubs, installed some tree rings with mulch on the trees after a little bit of orientation and development with the volunteers. So, we had a slow start to it, but I think that was good for us to get the bones of the program set in place, and we are going to request that we continue to keep working on it and see if we keep to develop it. We have some additional interested volunteers, too, that couldn't do it last year, but are looking forward to this year. Slow start, but we're going to make good progress, I think, and...
No issues or problems through the first year?
Not at all. None whatsoever.
You've got a lot of trees that need adopted?
We still do.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thousands of them.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yep. Good, thank you very much.
See you, see you next time.
Okay.
Next up is the Feed Study and Know Your Farmer, Know Your Food Event. And Amanda, it looks like she has a presentation, and I want to know what FEED stands for.
Oh, it's on your phone.
Okay.
Um, how do I get that?
There you go.
So, as you know, we, since I came on, I was tasked with doing these market umbrella surveys. The first one I did was the SEED, then I did the NEED, and this is the third one called the FEED.
Okay, so you're going to have to tell us what the acronyms mean.
Oh, yeah, so the SEED was Sticky Economy Evaluation Device. The NEED was the Neighborhood Exchange Evaluation Device, and this one is the Food Environment Evaluation Device. So, this got tabled, like buried under my desk, because it took place in July, but I finally, I got all the data in, and now the report's coming to you. So, we surveyed 388 shoppers on a Saturday.
So we surveyed 388 shoppers on a Saturday, July 26. I threw out a bunch of surveys because they were incomplete, or their answers didn't follow, didn't make sense, so the data I have is for 290 completed surveys. We had nine volunteers that day that dedicated 22 hours of volunteering, and I recently gave a report on volunteerism at the market, and there were some questions as to why we wouldn't use city of Moscow or Idaho state minimum wage numbers. So that's at varying numbers. The Independent Sector, which is a nonprofit and deals with putting a value to volunteer time, that's at a rate of $19.92 an hour for the state of Idaho. The city of Moscow labor employee is at $9 an hour, and then the Idaho state minimum wage, as you know, is $7.25. So that's just taking the 22 hours of volunteering and putting a value to it. So here's a survey. So this, this is actually the first time this survey has been done outside of Market Umbrella, outside of New Orleans, so I actually had to make my own template, because they didn't have one available. But I just took their questions, I applied it to our market. So when question five and question seven, asking about the product, we had pictures of kale for question five, and then for question seven, I decided to go with a fruit, and what's it called, a Pluot. I decided to use a Pluot, which is a plum and an apricot hybrid, because a lot of our, several of our vendors have that in the market.
Is that hairy plum?
No, I don't think it is. It looks like a dinosaur egg, I think, but. Here are some volunteers. My boyfriend's actually the carrot in the left-hand picture, and one of his fellow graduate students came out to volunteer in the heat in those costumes that day, so they were sweating by the end. So just looking at, we asked the shoppers how long they've been coming to the market. So this kind of shows you the demographics as far as shoppers who've been coming, either it's their first time to over a year. Again, we have a pretty high female presence in the market.
And a lot of return visitors.
And a lot of return visitors, yes. So I just decided to look at the questions based on what, how long, how often they were coming to the market, and how long they've been shopping there. When we asked, do you shop at the market regularly, we're asking if they come at least twice a month. So that's what we mean by regularly, it's not just once a month. Which is difficult, the first-time respondents, it's kind of hard to really figure that out. Yeah, exactly. So we asked, have you been introduced to new foods at the market? As you can see, a lot of people have, through the market, been introduced to new foods. And again, this, this survey was evaluating individual human capital at the market, so how does a market affect the, just one person? Has shopping at the market influenced the way you shop elsewhere? And again, it's, except for the first-time shoppers, which makes sense, right? Because it's their first time coming to market, so they don't know how it's influenced them. But as you can see over the year, yes, John?
Why do you think you've got eight to nine to two to three?
To 184.
Well, you know, the first time is three months, three to six, six to 12. And it appears that the three to six month, you get almost no activity.
Yeah. I'm wondering if it's because, it might have to do with the student population, I'm not quite sure, because I noticed that trend where we have a lot of first-time shoppers, we have a lot of people who've been coming over for a year. So I've thought about, because again, I just took Market Umbrella's questions and applied them to our market, but I think what would be more applicable for our market is rather than gauging in months, we gauge in years, because our market is over 30 years old, right? So that might be something where it would be a little more spread out.
Yeah, because it just looks as though that information from three to six and six to 12.
Yeah, it's not.
It's, doesn't really tell you anything.
Yeah, yeah.
There could be other questions.
Yeah, you're seeing huge swings in first time versus over a year.
Almost made it, girl. Almost.
So we then asked our shoppers, we gave them a picture of kale, and we said, have you ever seen this product before? If they had a difficult time telling what the product was, we told them, you know, we weren't gonna sit there and make them guess. But, you know, I think this kind of shows how kale is like, it was a superfood, there was a lot of media attention around kale, like way before our market, so a lot of first-time shoppers actually have seen this product before, so I'm not really surprised by that. Do you like the taste of kale? So out of those shoppers that said? Out of those shoppers that said, yes, I've seen this product before, we then asked, you know, did you like it? And some of them, they may have seen or recognized the product, but they've never tried it.
The one I'm gonna bill.
And then the number of participants who've seen a Pluot before, actually, a lot of people didn't know what this product was, so you can kind of see that jump, it's a little more. And that's even for shoppers who have been coming to the market for over a year. And I actually told some shoppers where you could find Pluots in the market. And then again, when we look at who has tasted the Pluot, you know, it's a little more evened out, because people haven't really tried it. And it does say Know Your Farmer, Know Your Food event on the agenda, but we decided that needs to be its own thing, so you guys just get the FEED study for today. But these are the volunteers that made it possible, and that's pretty much it. Just another measurement for our market.
I think we're still successful.
Yep, well, I know we are, so.
All right, well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen might as well stay here, she's on the next thing.
Okay, thank you.
Becky's gonna help.
Yes, she is.
Kathleen with the Public Art Master Plan update with Becky Couch and Kathleen Burns. Bill's messing with you with his remote.
Hello.
Hello.
All right, so Kathleen and I have a report for you here, a brief report on the city of Moscow Public Art Master Plan. So I wanted to go over just why are we working on a public art master plan, and what is the purpose of it? So first of all, the Moscow Arts Commission came up with a goal a few years ago to develop a public art master plan for the city, and then soon after formulated a public art subcommittee, and they've been working on developing ideas for the plan. The plan will, is intended to establish goals and objectives and articulate a 10-year community vision for public art within the city. Additionally, it will serve to educate the community about the benefits and importance of public art. It will document the existing public art collection and serve as a guide for organizing and prioritizing any future public art installations. And then it will identify capital and operational funding needs for a long-term, sustainable public art program. So those are the intended goals of the plan. I just wanted to include here some photos of existing art in Moscow. These are some examples of the glass etching on the bus shelters. And then some bike racks, which would be considered functional art, and some utility box art, or is that what we call it?
Final wraps.
Final wraps, yeah. And then, of course, the Heliotera sculpture at the South Cuplet, and the sculptures at the Hamilton Indoor Recreation Center, the murals on the Aquatic Center, and the art piece out at the fire station. The public input process that we've undergone so far for the plan initially began with some input from the citizen survey. In 2010, there was a question on the survey regarding preference for placement of art within the community. Responses included the library, municipal buildings, city parks and trails, and public walkways were the top choices. And then in 2012, there was a question for preferred types of public art, and responses included murals, fountains, sculptures, functional art, et cetera, those being the most preferred to least. And then the second form of public input that has been done is what the Arts Commission has called Culture Cafes, and these are types of sessions to collect input from the community. The first one took place during, during a workshop called the Design Thinking and Place Making Workshop, which was held in April of 2012, and these are some photos from that workshop. And then two more Culture Cafe sessions took place at the farmer's market in October, and then one in November of 2012. And then the fourth and final one was at the Bloom Restaurant in January of 2013. And so the next steps that we're planning on doing is, we've got a draft document and some draft project sites for our installations, so, and planning to have a public open house in early March to collect input on prioritization of those sites. And then we intend to finalize the draft plan after that, which will outline the priorities of 10 projects to be completed within the next 10 years. And then we will circulate the draft for public comment and anticipate it being brought before council for review and adoption sometime in May.
Sounds good.
That, I'm speechless. I know, that's uncommon for me.
It is.
That's a great report, I'm glad to see that. We don't hear a lot about public art and what's going on as far as promoting public art, and there's a lot of public art that divides the community. Some members of the community just, just love it, and there's others that think it's an absolute waste of money. And so I think that the program you're putting together, the, the information part of it to educate people as to the value of art, and as well as finding out what kind of art gathers the most support, you know, I think that's important, so I think this is a good study. There, I finally found some words.
I knew you would. If we leave you long enough.
I had no doubt you'd come up with something.
All right, well, I guess we look forward to seeing this throughout the Arts Commission, and then in front of council in May.
Good, well-thought-out approach, and I think you guys are gonna come up with some real good information, feedback from the public as to what they would like to see and where they would like to see it. So, good job.
All right.
Thank you. Bill, you got anything else for us? Then we'll consider ourselves adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
We be done.